All right, call the order of the common council meeting for July 28 at 6:38 PM. Roll call.
Madden?
Here.
Kubaki?
Here.
Engelhardt?
Here.
Capusta?
Here.
Terrence?
Here.
Hamel is absent. Ann Wolfe?
Here.
We have a quorum present.
Thank you. Statement of public notice?
This meeting was noticed in accordance with the open meeting law.
All right, public comment. Ms. Meyer, you here? Yep, please come up, state your name and address. I believe the microphone should still be on, but you might want to tilt it at least.
I can stand up like this.
All right.
My name is Rachel Meyer. I live at W-145 S-965 Brentwood Drive in Muskego, in the Test Corners area. And I'm here tonight to voice my concern for the issuing of outside dance permits for AJ Bar &amp; Grill and Tailspin Bar &amp; Grill. I understand that the common council wants to help businesses. As was mentioned in your last meeting that I watched online, businesses have been impacted negatively by coronavirus. In Muskego, the number of people with COVID-19 has more than doubled in nine days. On July 19, we had 106 cases. Today, we have 214. That information was from the Waukesha Health Department's census tracts from Muskego. I am concerned that when a permit is approved, there is no discussion about how the business plans on implementing procedures to keep people safe from COVID-19. There is a discussion about time and noise and the number of people expected, which can be as many as 500, but nothing about sanitation, socially, social distancing setup, or wearing masks. Muskego doesn't have a health department, but we are part of the Waukesha County Health Department. The county executive, Paul Farrell, stated on the county website, "Public safety is my top priority. That's why Waukesha County is doing everything possible to mitigate the spread of COVID-19." One piece of that is helping businesses and residents work together to conduct business in a way that provides for the health and safety of our residents and our economy. The Stay Safe, To Stay Open campaign aims to do that. As common council members, I hope you will provide guidance to businesses, to business owners requesting permits, like AJ's and Tailspin, who are planning large gatherings. And the guidance should be to help them to understand on how to spread, how to stop the spread of COVID-19. Waukesha County has surpassed Racine County and Kenosha County in COVID-19 cases. People are coming to these events from all over the place for the dance parties. Safety measures should be in place to help stop the spread of COVID-19 for everyone in Muskego. If someone attends one of the events, they are then back into Muskego, intermingling with everyone else. Thank you.
Thank you. That was all we got for cards today. Moving on from communications from the mayor's office. We'll start off with some good news. We were once again listed a top safest city in the country by Safe Wise. I believe, I know we got it last year, I believe we've gotten this a few times in a row. I'm not sure about past years, but we are the only city in the state of Wisconsin that got this award this year, that made the top 100. A metro area, the Fox Valley got it as a metro area, but not as any individual community. So, something to be proud of and, you know, contribute that to our police department, as well as our citizens, who are very good at watching out for each other and reporting things when they see it. So, thank you very much on that. And then, point of notification, the city has been notified that Ronald Schroeder has filed suit in federal court challenging our ordinance on how it restricts residency of individuals convicted of sex offender crimes. So, just a notification that we've been served on that. Moving on to consent agenda.
Approval of operator licenses. Resolution 60-2020, approval of certified survey map for Peg Arle LLP. Resolution 61-2020, approval of a certified survey map for Balmor. Resolution 62-2020, reduction of cash deposit for Maki Properties BVLC Harvest Court. Resolution 63-2020, approval of intergovernmental agreement with the city of Waukesha regarding Great Water Alliance Project. And resolution 65-2020, approval of Muskego Community Festival Incorporated and the city of Muskego lease agreement for the Veterans Memorial Park Pavilion.
Motion to approve, Gross.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Moving on to new business. Resolution 064-2020, resolution to send the Ingle King, Ingle King Sports Court Proposal to Public Works and Safety Committee for reconsideration. So, this is an item that, oh, first, let's bring it to the floor.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, so this is an item that was discussed at the last Public Works meeting. There is a petitioner on, I believe they're on Little Muskego Lake, that wants to construct a new home with a sports court in their basement. And our ordinance states that basements have to be at least one foot above the measured groundwater?
Two feet above.
Two feet?
Yeah.
Yeah, all right. So, two feet above the measured groundwater. And they want to actually go below the public groundwater on this. There was discussion at Public Works. They did approve it at Public Works. Since then, I heard from Alderman Kubaki specifically, that he wanted to discuss this at council. One of the things that weren't brought up at Public Works was the possible danger that this could put onto the neighbors if we're de-watering the area, what it might do to the groundwater, and other unforeseen aspects of more than just what would happen to that home. So, do you want to start?
Just a couple of comments. And the reason that I brought this up with the mayor is that while I believe in personal property rights, private property rights, if it affects a neighboring property, I think there should be a lot more discussion about, about the issue. In this case, in that report, which to me was a very cautionary report, it talked about de-watering. What de-watering is, and I'm no engineer, I'm no expert on this, but because you're digging below the normal groundwater area, water from surrounding areas can go into that excavation. That water's got to be dealt with before a footing can be, can be poured. Well, you're taking not only the water that is resident in that hole, but you're taking water from surrounding properties, which could cause some instability of the land in those areas. It could. I'm not saying that it will, but it could. I know they have cautionary statements in there from, from their engineering report as to how that's going to perform, but it frightens me when I read the report. The second thing is the report also calls for multiple sump pumps that could run 24/7. There's no guarantee. As a neighbor to someone who's running a sump pump 24/7, no, thank you. I really don't want that, that water issue, nor the noise, to be a problem for a neighboring property. The Wisconsin Department of Safety and Professional Services also, in their letter, cited possible 24/7 running of a sump pump in that area, and some of the cautionary details surrounding this excavation. So, my recommendation is, I think it requires a lot more research, a lot more conversation.
After the meeting, I reached out to a third party that, an architect that has worked in the city, and we talked a lot about it, because again, same here, I have absolutely no expertise in the area, and I wanted kind of his opinion on it. And he had some of the same hesitations. We sort of walked through it. He did say that the organization that did the water test, very trustworthy, great company, he 100% would use them for the stuff he does. But when we walked through some of the location to the property next to it, he had some questions. He was confident that even at that depth, there are ways to keep the property dry, and that's what he said. He, you know, kind of commented on the wells at the bottom elevators, they do the same thing, like they're in the water table. Said it's possible, said it's not a challenge that they can't work around, but when we did talk about the concern on location, he said he had some questions that he would want answered before he would be comfortable saying, hey, yeah, that's something that is safe to go ahead with. I don't know how you get those questions answered, that's sort of the, throw that up in the air, like how do you, what type of engineer comes in and says, yes, structurally you can do this without affecting your neighbor, and what does that company do? What does that report a cost? Is there somebody that would even do that? To the point where we would be comfortable, I don't have answers to those questions, but that was sort of where that hesitation came back up again, so.
Mr. Alderman Wolf?
Well, I know down in my district, there's a lot of water problems, and I think it's because of the age of the homes. And the homes were built lower, and there's a reason why they're built higher now. And try to tell someone in one of those homes that, and try to do stuff for them is really hard to do. I also have problems with, with sump pumps running a lot, and I get calls about that as well, and there's not much we can do as long as they're draining in the right direction and they're there. But people don't like the noise or where the water ends up from the sump pumps running all the time as well. So, I just want to make a point that I think we should send it back and have it talked, looked at again. I believe that there's a reason why we build higher in Muskego than, than we used to build. And we definitely are a wet area, so.
Alderman Kapusta, any thoughts?
Scott?
What's the difference in foot level of water level that he would be building at compared to what we would be proposing here?
So, if I remember right, their, their bottom of their basement floor would be about three to four feet below our code. Okay, so our code is two feet above. So, you got to think about it, I think you'd be about, if I want to make sure, about one and a half?
Four feet lower than code.
Four feet, four feet lower than code, so if you really look at where the groundwater would be, that's probably two feet below the groundwater, is the best way to put it. So, that's four feet difference from our code, two feet into the groundwater. And while we look at groundwater, how we do it at the lake, there's an ordinary high-water mark. So, we have an ordinary high-water mark for Dunoon, Little Muskego, Big Muskego. They did groundwater sampling. We're right in the same ballpark. So, that ordinary high-water mark, we're pretty confident that's what it is at that lake. So, just to kind of let you know, whatever that ordinary high-water lake is, you know where that groundwater is, so.
So, and how far, on this proposed development, how far is that from the neighbors?
So.
Yep, there you go.
Again, that's their proposal. It's not done yet. This is just asking for the variance in the thing. That's the best I can tell you, it's 17 feet. They haven't gone through the planning process to make sure that they're all with all the setbacks, with everything, but.
I understand the engineer that's proposing to help them with this, he's here tonight?
I'd be happy to share some more information.
I'd love to hear it.
Well, before that, let me ask a question. Can they build this higher?
Again, like I said before in the Public Works committee.
That's just their proposal.
I had no problem at all, like, I don't think it would be even here. If they were at that code level, they wouldn't be asking for a variance for the Public Works, I guess.
Okay, so they can build it?
There's nothing in our code that would preclude that.
We would have to just, we would have to just look with Adam, nothing with the Public Works. I mean, if it was built at the right thing, we wouldn't be discussing this. Okay? If this was at that right thing, and I made that clear at the Public Works, and I...
Because if he moves it up four feet, the building's going to be up four feet higher. That, and there's no dilemma with that.
Correct.
That's my point.
Well, I don't know how high the building is, and then I would have to check with, with, with.
Okay, that's something that, see, there has to be more information involved with that.
Yeah, there's a lot to it. The drawing shows, it's an addition. So, the, like, the floor is sort of set to, I think, keep that seamless, I think.
This is the first, kind of, the first thing that they were asking for was a variance.
Sure.
Because that defines everything.
I can understand it, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Why not ask?
And it's a big deal. It's a, it's a, it's a big deal, so. And just to let you know, this is a very standard rule in a lot of places. Waukesha County, it's a foot above, ours is two feet above, so this is nothing new. Back in the report too, I want to put it, about a year ago, our code got challenged by another person who wanted to build this entire house in it. They challenged our code at DSPS, myself, Jeff, and Adam. We had to write a letter to the lawyer, we had to, we had to go through our whole code back and forth. We were found that our code is legit, and we can practice with that. Is that correct, Jeff?
Yes.
And that was the other parts in the, in the thing, so, just to let everyone know.
Question, any other questions? Jeff, do you want to?
Sure. So, if you're finding our code is legit, my next question is, why do you really want to vary from that? I can never advise you guys to go around our code. I mean, our code is there for a reason. This two feet, whatever was set up, is there for a reason. As Scott says, it was challenged, and it came out to be valid. So, that's just one thing. The other thing is, people are always going to look at what you did and why you did it. So, you have to have good reasons to do something. I wasn't at Public Works, so I don't know what the reason was as to why this variance should be granted. But again, they're going to look at it, if, if it's granted because, hey, this is a good idea, we want to help this homeowner, those aren't really good reasons. He's got to pretty much show some kind of a hardship or something. This is, this is probably a want, we'd all want something like this, this is pretty neat, right? But it's not a need, and so there's no reason that I've seen yet, that the person needs this type of thing. In terms of looking at other prop, at the neighboring properties, that's really, really important, I think, for you, because if something goes wrong on a neighboring property, it'll be a battle of the experts. So, what I mean is, they're going to get an expert to kind of figure out what went wrong. If that person says that it's this neighboring property, then they've got their expert that says something. The city basically could be in a position here to be sued, because someone can say, well, why did you allow this in the first place? You guys discussed it, you knew about it, it was obviously a concern because it was on your agenda, so because you allowed it, someone can say, well, you should bear now some other responsibility. So, that's something that you should really be careful, considering what the neighboring properties, we have no agreement with them, they basically would just look at us and say, you know, could you be responsible? Could we be sure we could? Because again, we're, we're trying to vary, and they use the word waiver and vary, but we're trying to go around our code, what are the reasons that we're going around our code? So, that's something to be careful about. The other thing, it's my understanding that there is this issue thrown out there about a waiver, that the property owner would sign a waiver saying that if something goes wrong with his property, he wouldn't hold the city responsible. Well, that's all fine in and of itself, but remember, the waiver is just between us and the current property owner. You know, somebody said, well, let's record it so that everybody else knows who would buy that property in the future, that there is this issue, that they built this, this court. Well, again, the waiver is between us and the current owner. So, for example, let's say they sell the property, the new owner may look at us and say, I'm not going to sign any waiver, I don't have to sign a waiver, I'm just going to let it be the way it is. And if something goes wrong, and that particular person now runs into a problem, he can come back to the city and say, hey, you know, why did you allow this in the first place? And then, we look, I look at you and I say, well, okay, I got a waiver. Well, I got a waiver with the old owner. Maybe the old owner isn't even in the state of Wisconsin anymore, who knows where he is? So, if we get sued on something like that, because again, we allowed this, we went around our code, all we've got kind of to look at is to say, well, okay, let's go find the old owner and see if he can indemnify us. Well, why do we want to do all this? Why do we want to be involved in these types of lawsuits from surrounding neighbors or from new owners, when in the first place, this is something that you really don't have to do? There's no reason why, unless you can come up with some really good reasons. And I wasn't at Public Works, I haven't heard any of the reasons, but you got to make sure you're careful about why you're doing this, state reasons why you're doing this. I mean, everybody wants something. Everybody wants something. And so, if we're going to start saying, okay, we're going to give this to you, what's the next guy going to come and say? Well, he's going to want something. Are we going to vary from the code to give him something? I mean, you could take this to a level of, you know, are we going to just start doing this for everybody? And it's the old adage, which you guys hear me saying, what you do for one, you've got to do for the next guy. And so, where does it stop? You're kind of on a slippery slope here, that this could just start coming up in all different areas. I want this, I want that, you should give me this, you should give me that. Well, you gave it to the guy for the sport court, why can't you give it to me for what I want? Well, that's dangerous. That starts you on this slippery slope of where is it all going to end? And so, I think you guys just have to be careful to look at what you're doing, why you're doing it, you know, have good reasons for doing it.
Any other questions?
So, where are we at? Is this going back down to plant, uh, public safety?
So, because the way the, our current ordinance, which will be coming back for a change, but right now, the way the ordinance is written, is the Public Works Committee can grant the waiver on it, the same thing with council, so.
They can grant it, but there's been reconsideration off of there?
They granted it, but they have the option of reconsideration. There is a Public Works special meeting tonight yet after, when we follow, there's going to be a meeting for that, to put this to bed one way or the other.
So, how many people are on the committee? There was, there was two reconsiderations, right?
There's two people on the committee, uh, there's three people on the committee, two were there for the initial meeting, there's two there, two here tonight.
So, there's one tonight after this, you said?
Yeah, immediately after that, we'll have a Public Works, we have agendized a special Public Works meeting for this one item.
Okay, and we're looking to change this, that if it comes with the council, you said?
The council, right, no. We will, the, the ordinance in the future, we will be bringing it back for a modification.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve this resolution.
So, this resolution, all this resolution does is ask Public Works to reconsider this. Second.
That's definitely a good idea.
Yeah.
So, we need a motion for that?
Nope, we already got it.
It's done.
So, just make sure you have all your questions. Once you, we had enough discussion up here, we'll take a vote and move on. So, any other questions?
I'd be happy to provide some more information.
Well, you probably do at Public Works if you'd like, it's going to be a meeting right after this, so it's just another meeting, which is a different part. So, typically, at common council.
Yeah, we're going to vote on sending it, keeping it, or accepting or sending it back, right?
Yeah, so you're, and typically, at common council, we don't have people coming up and discussing unless it's part of our staff or whatever, so.
I did have a lot of information up there.
And which, which you can provide at, in a few, you know, minutes, probably, so. Called a different meeting, but we're all going to be sitting up here anyway, so, all right. All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Passes, the resolution passes unanimously. This will be discussed later on tonight at Public Works. Moving on to unfinished business. Ordinance 1447, ordinance to amend the zoning map in the 2020 comprehensive plan for the city of Muskego, B-4, RM1, and PD-38 to PD, Cornerstone Development, second reading.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Review of committee reports.
Public Works and Safety for May 18, 2020, Plant Commission for June 2, 2020, and Finance Committee for June 23, 2020.
All right, license approval.
Approval of outside dance permit for AJ's Bar &amp; Grill on Boxhorn Drive for 8:01 and 8:15, 4:30 to 7:30, and 8:18, 5:30 to 8:30, and an amendment to the licensed premise to include the grass area surrounding the patio for 8:01 and 8:15, 4 to 8 PM, and 8:18, 5 to 9 PM.
Could I have a motion?
Motion approved.
Second?
Second.
All right, discussion.
I think the comments that were made by the young lady earlier should be a part of this. I, I don't know how you make it a part of this, but I think those, those comments, those cautionary comments should be included in this licensure.
So, what are you suggesting? What are you suggesting then, Kevin?
I don't know, maybe, maybe just a, an accompanying letter or something, just stating certain things that the Health Department recommends.
I think it's not a bad idea. I mean, I would also maybe do that retroactively for all of them that we've extended.
Yes.
Sort of a, hey, conscious, being conscious of the situation, yeah, it's not a bad idea.
Yep.
Because right now, it's not required, as you go to some stores, they say required, and other stores say recommended. So, you're saying to have a recommendation?
Recommendations from the Health Department, yeah.
Right, the recommendation, not a requirement or recommendation.
Right.
Okay. I just, so it's clear, I just wanted to be clear.
We would be providing those businesses what the county's recommending. We can't force them to do it, we're not going to.
So, ask them to post a sign on their door or something, or?
No, it'd be, like, so, in this case, for AJ's, we would provide them either a link or a list of what the county recommendations are for, for businesses and gatherings. What he does with that information is going to be up to him.
Correct, gotcha. And we should, and we're going to go back and, can we do that to the other ones that we?
All we're doing is providing information.
That's right.
We can do that to all of our businesses if we want.
I mean, I just like, again, you know, me less, leading consistency.
I agree with Alderman, I, I agree with Alderman Wolf. I mean, if we're going to do it for one, I don't want AJ's to say, how come you sent me these guidelines, you didn't send them to anybody else? So, do it retroactively.
We just made a blanket affirmation from this council to say, we're going to stick by what the county health has provided for us.
Well, I don't know if we have a choice.
Yeah, but, well.
And right now, it's just recommendations.
That's why I'm using the word affirmation on it. We're affirming that that's our position.
Or recommending.
Right.
Recommending.
And I, I think that, you know, what you're suggesting is prudent, no problem with that at all. I do want to point out, though, that, you know, we'll, we'll take an example of, well, this petitioner had something come in front of us last council, which was voted down to have an outside premise for it, so his alternative solution to that was just to move it all indoors, which he was fully within his rights to do. So, now, instead of having these amount of people spread out outside, they're compressed inside. So, and there's nothing we can do about that. So, I mean, one of, these, these outside dance permits are... One of the reasons that Plant Commission and myself had asked for the Plant Commission, was for these outside dance permits, wasn't to provide extra revenue for these businesses, it was to allow them to have venues, to allow them to operate in a safer manner than they would be without them. So, that was my intention, you know, I, I...
And I think most businesses are doing, are trying to do that, right?
They're trying to, because that's what people want. I mean, I, I really, you know, not real keen on sitting in a real crowded place. Admittedly, I've done it, but I mean, I'd prefer to be sitting outside in a wide-open space. Everything she said was valid, I get it, but, you know, we have a limited amount of control, and I'm just telling you what the, the purpose was, at least for us, and I know that's one of the reasons Tailspin is doing it, because she's told me, so.
I mean, you look at Trace Locals as a fine example of how it's working, you know?
But the businesses and the patrons are subject to their own wishes in how far they go with listening.
They lead them to water, but we can't make them drink.
We can't control them, and it's not our intent to control them, is it?
Right, we're just providing them with the best information that we have available.
Well, without, without any regulations coming down from a, a state or a county.
State or county.
Yeah, right, and that's where this would have to come from.
Or federal.
Providing them with that information, I think, is prudent, so. All right, any further discussion on this? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Approval of outdoor dance permit and temporary amendment to licensed premises for Tailspin Bar &amp; Grill on Martin Drive for August 13 from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Same thing.
Same thing.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Voucher approvals.
Motion to approve utility vouchers in the amount of $320,184.28. Second.